Good morning. Welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting. Today is Thursday, March 12th, 2015. It is nine o'clock a.m. We're going to start the meeting with prayer by Pastor Kathy Knight from the Milton First United Methodist Church. Then we'll have our pledge by-
Let us pray. Most gracious and loving God, we come to you with sad hearts this day as we remember the U.S. Marines who were killed in a training exercise earlier this week outside of Navarre. We ask that you bless their families and friends and all those who mourn their loss this day. We also ask that you bless this Board of County Commissioners and all those who lead us and guide us. Help all of them to see the light of your Son, Jesus Christ, who will guide us through the sad times and rejoice with us in good times and help us to know your will for our lives. For this, we give you thanks this day. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our country's flag. And as we pledge this morning, let's not only keep in mind the tragic loss of our military and their families, but those of the responders that are out there every day working to find what caused this. And each and every person in this country, from the youngest child to the oldest generations, that hold their hands over their heart and pledge allegiance to this country. I think it's an honorable thing to do, and my feelings are, if you don't love it, leave it. Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Before we get into the agenda, the pastor talked about it, Commissioner Cole talked about it, but we all are aware that on Tuesday evening, an Army helicopter, Black Hawk helicopter, went down in the Navarre Sound area. Had seven Marines and four Army personnel. They're all still missing. And like Commissioner Cole and the pastor said, we need to make sure we pray for those military personnel, their families, because it's going to be some difficult times those families are going to go through. I know they had a candlelight vigil last night. Commissioner Rob Williamson attended, so I will ask Commissioner Rob Williamson to make some comments on what happened last night at Navarre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think our county engineer, Roger Blaylock, was there as well. And easily more than 200 folks were out there at the pier last night. And folks walked out to the end of the pier and was holding candles. And there was this dense fog last night. And picture more than 200 people standing there singing "Amazing Grace." And it was certainly something that was very moving and emotional and is not something that I will soon forget. James Blackwood, Lynette Wade, Scott Rayner, Stephanie Maddox, Pastor Tim Payne of Momentum Church, all and a bunch of others helped make that happen last night. And just want to say thank you to them. And the outpouring of support in the Navarre community has been nothing short of amazing, but not surprising. It's just what we do. It's amazing to be part of this community in this county that responds like this. This morning, before coming in, I stopped by the command center. And the owner of the Chop House Restaurant in Navarre, David Jennings, he was making breakfast for all the first responders and all the military personnel that were there this morning. And so it's definitely a tragedy. My heart goes out to the families, but the community and our county is definitely wrapping their arms around those folks. And it was amazing to be a part of. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. At this time, I would just ask everyone, let's have a moment of silent prayer for those personnel and those families. Please bow your heads. This time, we'll have the approval of the minutes of the February 12th, 2015 and February 26th, 2015 regular meetings. And the February 26th, 2015 special meeting, I would move approval of those minutes without objection. Here, none, they pass. At this time, we will approve the agenda for today. I'll start with my far right, Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do have one item to add, but before I do that, I did want to say just a special thank you to some of the county staff, in particular, the Emergency Management Division of our county, also our first responders, our Sheriff's Department and the Sheriff's deputies, because the military, you know, had control of that operation, but there was a lot of county staff over the last two days that have been working on this. So thank you for all that you do. You know, yesterday was a clear reminder of that phrase, that freedom isn't free. And it doesn't always just happen abroad. It can happen during training missions, because they're training to be the greatest warriors in the world, is what they're doing. So our hearts are heavy. We have a unique relationship with the military here in Santa Rosa County, and we have a special bond with our military. So our hearts are definitely heavy today and will continue to be. And our thoughts and our prayers are with the 11 families that are affected with this tragic event. As far as an agenda item, Mr. Chairman, I did want to add just information only about the presidential preference primary. And that's all I have for today.
We will make that number 15 on the administrative committee? Okay, Commissioner Cole?
No items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Commissioner Rob Williamson?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynch?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Andrews?
No changes.
Mr. Blaylock?
No changes.
All right. Under Economic Development, number six, I just want to give a brief update on our trip to Tallahassee yesterday. Met with some of our representatives, talking about Whiting Aviation Park and beach renourishment. Just a brief update. That'd be number six. All right, with those changes, we will now approve the agenda without objection. Here, none, it is approved. Before I forget, anyone with cell phones, please put them in a silent mode. Anyone wishing to speak today, make sure you fill out a speakers form here at the front desk. This time, we have two proclamations today and then two presentations. First proclamation is going to be Flood Safety Awareness Week. Karen Thornhill, come forward, please, to the microphone. On behalf of our board, I will read the proclamation, County of Santa Rosa proclamation. Whereas floods can happen anytime, anywhere, and without warning, and whereas flooding creates emergencies of great concern to Santa Rosa County with imminent threat to life and property and causes hundreds of millions of dollars in damage to homes, businesses, and local infrastructure, and whereas the state of Florida has received 21 presidential disaster declarations for flooding since 2000, and whereas Santa Rosa County has suffered major flooding events in 1998, 2004, 2005, 2009, 2011, 2013, and 2014, causing millions of dollars in damages and destroying or damaging thousands of homes and businesses. And whereas damage from a flood is not normally covered under standard homeowners policy, residents are encouraged to review their flood risk and purchase flood insurance to protect their property from flood. And whereas the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, has named March 15th through March 21st, 2015 as National Flood Safety Awareness Week, and June 1st is the start of hurricane season. So Karen, keep it calm. The hurricane season. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County concur that a public that is well informed of the dangers associated with flooding can improve its preparedness and reduce the occurrence of death and injury as a result of severe flooding, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County that the week of March 15th through March 21st, 2015 is proclaimed Flood Safety Awareness Week, passed and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County, Florida, this 12th day of March, 2015. And I had the honor to represent the board and sign it. So Karen, would you like to make some comments?
No, thank you.
Well, then you don't have a choice. You've got to come up and have your picture made with it.
Thank you. I appreciate it, gentlemen.
Karen and all of the folks who work in that department, y'all do a great job. It was just, it seemed like a few months ago, we had the high water mark, and that was just another reminder of people to know where you live and the occurrences that might occur during a flood. So we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next one is Red Cross Month. Jerry Kendall? Thank you, Jerry, for being here. County of Santa Rosa proclamation, whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank everyday heroes, those who reach out to help their neighbors when they are in need, and whereas American Red Cross heroes are on their front lines every day. They volunteer their time, give blood, take lifelong courses, or provide financial donations to help those in need. And whereas we would like to remember our heroes here in Santa Rosa County who give to help people in need, they work tirelessly to help in times of disaster, when someone needs life-saving blood or the comfort of a helping hand. They provide round-the-clock support to members of the military, veterans and their families, and teach life-saving classes in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And whereas across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responded to disasters. When an injured service member ended up in a hospital far from home, the American Red Cross offered comfort. When a hospital patient needed blood, American Red Cross blood donors helped them. When a lifeguard jumped in to save a drowning child, or someone stepped up to help a heart attack victim, the American Red Cross was there. Whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross' mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County, do hereby proclaim the month of March 25th as American Red Cross Month. And encourages all citizens to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission, passed and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County, Florida, this 12th day of March, 2015. Board of County Commissioners, Santa Rosa County, Florida. I had the honor to sign for us, so would you like to make some comments?
To thank the board for the proclamation and the county and the citizens, because like the proclamation says, it's the donations and the time and treasures that make it work. Red Cross sometimes is considered this big entity, national organization, but it's really our neighbors. It's the person holding the door when you're walking into a business for you. And sadly, we were there supplying support yesterday and today for the first responders. House fires is the biggest thing we do, but all of these things happen every day, but it's because of the citizens and the community volunteering their time that make it work. So thank you.
Thank you. And I recall, unfortunately, Hurricane Ivan and the role y'all played in helping our citizens recover from that. A lot of the things you do, they're behind the scenes, and a lot of people don't see it. I know that part of the proclamation talked about how you help our active-duty military. If there's an emergency and they're overseas or someplace and they need help getting home, y'all always stand up and help the military as well. So we appreciate everything you do. Come forward, please. The first is the Pierce Barrett FDEP FWC Natural Resource Damage Assessment, NRDA update. Mr. Walker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barrett's here, and he's got a PowerPoint that he will make, just to update the board on this process as we move through it. And Pierce, you go ahead and tell the- I would like to remind the board that Mr. Barrett has a history with Santa Rosa County. At one time, when I got here, Mr. Barrett was our landfill engineer and probably still has the scars from Mr. Gomelion driving him into the dirt, or his fees, as best I recall. But Mr. Barrett has done a good job of that and really has done a yeoman's work in kind of being the front man with at least the local governments on this new process that we're all getting used to. So he's here to kind of update you on that process.
Welcome. Name and address, please.
My name is Pierce Barrett. You're good, I guess. Okay. Pierce Barrett, I'm the engineer. My address is 3900 Commonwealth Boulevard, Tallahassee, Florida. Anyway, gentlemen, I am happy to be here again. As Hunter said, I had a previous experience with the county as a consultant. I do have Comptector tracks up my back from those experiences. But actually, no, it was a very good experience. Enjoyed working with Tony in his previous position and getting to know Hunter and Roger especially. As all of you may know, four years ago, or back in 2010, it's five years, almost five years ago now, we had the Deep Horizon Oil Spill accident that occurred. And out of that came the early restoration process in which BP guaranteed money to several states along the Gulf, as well as several federal agencies. Now, the state has been paid by BP for this early restoration money. The money came into the state in late the past year, and it's approximately $88 million for Phase III projects. In these Phase III projects, there are several projects that are here in Santa Rosa County. They primarily are at Navarre Beach. You have the two projects, which is the Coastal Access Project and the Gulfside Walkover Project, which amount to approximately a little over $1.8 million. At this time, the Coastal Access Project is on the sound side. That will include a new kayak launching, canoe launching facility, and several boardwalk structures to gain further access to the sound side of the park. This is an early rendering of what that would look like. I know it's a little difficult to see. You may be able to see on your handouts a little better, but you can see the two walkouts and the kayak launching facility location. There's also dune restoration to occur in that area as well. The existing parking and all that will remain the same. There are no new vertical structures going on that side of the park. The other project is the Gulfside Walkover Complex. This project includes a new parking area, a new restroom facility, new pavilions, boardwalks, a beach access crossover, and a lifeguard facility. I want to also mention that all these new projects will be ADA accessible so that anyone can enjoy these facilities out there at Navarre Park. This is a conceptual idea of what the new facility on the Gulf side will look like. We had to do several concessions with the Federal Fish and Wildlife Service, our own state FWC, as well as Audubon. As many of you know who go out there, this is a favorite breeding area for the shorebirds who are protected species. So we had to make some concessions in moving around facilities, but everybody's in agreement now that this will work as laid out. We anticipated in the next six months to have engaged an engineering consultant to finalize designs and the permitting on the project. We estimate that it'll take nine to 12 months to construct it and that the work unfortunately has to be done during the off-season, or fortunately, however you look at it. But we've got to work around the tourists and the birds and the turtles, so most work out there would be during the fall, early spring, and winter months. There's other projects that the county will also be a direct recipient of, and I'll cover these very briefly. The Artificial Reef Project, in which the county has a little over $1.4 million allocated to the deployment of artificial reefs. These will be handled by FWC through their already existing Artificial Reef Program, which I believe is handled in a reimbursable grant-type project. There's also the Wayside Boat Ramp in Gulf Breeze. This project unfortunately will be put on hold for a while due to the new bridge being built, so we'll have to wait to see what happens to that area once the bridge is laid down. But the money will still be available to Gulf Breeze to do improvements to that facility. There's also the new Escobano Point Wildlife Area, which FWC purchased through another grant from the Deepwater Horizon Oil Spill, and the total project amount there is $2.5 million. This will allow public to go out there and use that area for fishing, primitive camping, and just wildlife and nature. That's the Wayside Boat Ramp location. And then there's the informational, and that's Escobano Point. So that's it. Quick and dirty. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. You've got my information in the back of the PowerPoint. Feel free to contact me at any time. I'll be glad to take any questions and answer you as best I can.
Thank you, Pierce. Very informative. Any comments, questions by the board? Commissioner Rob Williamson?
Thanks for coming today.
It's my pleasure.
Can you look at the map for the Navarre Beach project? I wanted to ask specifically about the options one and two that you have mentioned for the one in orange, that's the elevated over roads?
Yes, sir.
That looks like, does that, what does that connect with? It doesn't connect, that's just a county building that isn't-
Those aren't part of the original project. Those were brought about by some discussions earlier on with the Audubon, FWS, and FWC. As far as people, like, I understand there's a lot of educational opportunity that's provided out there at the park. So when they bring the students and so forth through, what those agencies did not want is for people to be trampling through the nesting area, which is basically bordered by those two walkways. Should the project have the money available to build those, we have told those agencies that we'll be glad to consider putting them in, one or both of them. But that depends on whether the original part of the project, which is the restrooms, pavilions, and so forth, can be funded and there's enough money left to build those. So that's really what they are. As you can see, they're actually, those things are framing that bird nesting area.
Right. The one for the blue, I could definitely see the value in that, you know, greater use. It's closer to those pavilions. Heck, I use those quite a bit myself. My stand-up paddleboard is really not going to like going over all those speed bumps, but I'm sure we can do some kind of traffic calming instead of the actual speed bumps. But the other one, you know, increasing the amount of crossing there, I'm concerned about safety in that area, because that is pretty much the only way to get in and out of the park. I do like the other part of the project was, you had the green there, which that's, there's another pathway or walkway that goes to the sound. But I'd love to talk to you or have the staff be part of the process as it relates to that option one. I can see the value in having both of those walkways, but perhaps you could consider amending that in some way. And I'm obviously open for any suggestions on that orange one. The idea of it going to that other building kind of concerns me.
Well, the orange was actually proposed as an elevated walkway. But be sure, these are just preliminary, and they're suggestions that came from, I don't know whether it was FWS or Audubon, whomever it was, but they're just shown on this drawing as it was presented from them. But I assure you, we've already met many times with Hunter, Roger, and Sheila on these projects, and the county will be included in the process. And I look forward to coming back to you in some months with some design concepts a little further along than this to get comment from the board and the public as necessary.
And I'm excited about the project. Don't get me wrong, this is a great addition to the park, to be sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Anyone else? Commissioner Lane Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the two walkways there, the orange one specifically, was a request of the Marine Science Center out there, because that's almost a direct shot for the kids in the classroom. They run so many kids through that classroom, and they always go to the seashore to do research and look at the different marine life and everything down on the shoreline. So they wanted a direct access, rather than having to walk an eighth of a mile down the access road to get to one of the walkovers at the existing pavilions to go down to the water. So this would give them a direct shot down to the water. So, but when and if there's a possibility of having funding for one or both of those walkovers, then we'll reengage with your office and the interested stakeholders down there in the park and try to narrow in on a preferred location. But I appreciate all the work you're doing, not just at the beach, Escobano Point. I've been out there. That's going to be a wonderful facility. I think it's been kind of flying under the radar in terms of the long-term benefit that that's going to have to our community. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Pierce, once again, we appreciate all your hard work, and I'm sure we'll give you some feedback.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to go to the next presentation, FDEP Clear Creek OMV Park Opening.
Mr. Chairman, this is a familiar group with you, is the coastal concessions who not only have your pier, but now are the state's concessionaire on the recently opened off-road vehicle park just north of Whiting, really just kind of north of the little former golf course exit that we had placed in there a number of years ago.
Good morning, guys. Scott Rayner, 201 Pensacola Beach Road. We are here for the state, but being that we're up here, we're going to kind of take this opportunity and hit some quick bullet points about the pier. Gentlemen, our relationship with USA Volleyball, it's come to fruition. We're already seeing record numbers and turnout activities. We've got professional courts out there now fenced and outlined with sponsors. Local, our local area high schools, Fort Walton Beach, Cresview, Walton, and Navarre, and Niceville, has started official volleyball, beach volleyball clubs, which you have to become a club before it becomes an official sport. But the recognition that beach volleyball is getting and that it's in the Olympics and that our area, most of the schools have already said it's just around the corner before it becomes an official sport. With that, the Navarre Beach Pier will be Navarre High School's home court. Beach Pier will be Navarre High School's home court. We are also having next Friday night, it's a trial run. We're going to be doing a movie night. It's a 20-foot projector, going to be on the west side volleyball court. All movies are going to be family-oriented, G-rated movies. If it, if we get good feedback and everything works out, then during the summer, we're going to be doing a, a Friday night summer movie series out there for all the kids and family, just kind of sit down in the sand and, and watch a movie.
Hi, guys. Stephanie Maddox, 84, 36 Gulf Boulevard. Keeping with the family-oriented, we're also going to, our fundraisers this year is going to be, of course, our Take-A-Kid Fishing. We'd like to implement one for the Sheriff Department and the first responders because they're always, they help the whole community within minutes, especially after last night. It showed us just how much they do do for us. So we'd also like to start keeping with the fire on the water, the Lagerfest, smoking on the pier, and maybe even a beach chili cook-off. The biggest one that we're going to start this year would be a Parents' Day Off would be working in conjunction with the Sea Turtle Sanctuary and the Marine Science Center. It'd be an all-day event. They'll get to learn about Navarre Beach, fish on the pier, learn volleyball, learn about sea turtles, and trash pickup on our beach. And we haven't finalized that yet, but all of the proceeds will go to the school board in Santa Rosa County. All right, you're up.
Good morning, gentlemen. Josh Bickett, 1604 Champagne Avenue, Gulf Breeze. Just want to address a few points, some of the concerns that have, we've had recently. The, the storage container that's currently, well, now is in the process of being moved underneath the pier to, to get it out of, out of sight. We were assured that it should be underneath the pier by Monday. So exterior painting, we will start that next week as well. Also, we are in the process of presenting a presentation to improve some of the aesthetics of the, of the pier by planting some, some palm trees around the area.
And that's it for the pier, hopefully.
Moving on to the, the real reason, the main reason why we're here, is we just signed a 15-year contract with the state to manage and be the concessioners for their new OHV Park, off-highway vehicle. It's dirt bikes, ATVs, eventually side-by-sides. It's family-oriented. There's no alcohol. There are, long story short, we're having a ribbon-cutting ceremony April 18th, and we need to extend and would like to extend all the commissioners to join us that day. We finalized an agreement with Ricky Carmichael. He's going to be part of the ceremony. He's going to be signing autographs. His new company, RCR Racing, they're going to be there riding the trails, giving out demos. We're going to have multiple corporate sponsors, news media, live music, food vendors, product demos, and local area dealers as well.
And if you guys don't already know about the OHV Parks, it's got 27 miles of professionally-groomed trails, and it provides riders of all kinds to enjoy a safe place to ride. They're all one-directional trails, so you don't have to really worry about the oncoming traffic. We will also have children's tracks, concession store product sales, multiple events to include a bicycle day, a local emergency response training, and vendor music and food events.
And gentlemen, I kind of want to get ahead of this. As, we're, I feel like we're, we're experts at this now, but any government contract comes with a level of public concern. This one, the number one, is going to be noise complaints. There, there are some local neighbors there, and they've already expressed to the state that they're worried and are, they're worried about the noise that's out there. To address this, we have several onsite decibel readers. Riders must have a stock exhaust system, and they cannot go over 96 decibels. Just the other day, when we were out there, we read a couple of low-flying aircraft, and the low-flying aircraft exceeded 110 decibels. So the, the decibels or the, or the noise coming from these bikes are actually quieter than the aircraft that's out there flying every day. I just wanted to give you guys that information because I'm sure foreseeing in the future, there's going to be some phone calls about the noise.
So just to conclude, we're, we're very excited about this contract. We feel it puts the southeast on, on the map as, as a premier location for ATV riders. And as Scott said, we will be sending out an invitation next week. Thank you, gentlemen.
That's it. In case anybody has any questions.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Rob Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for coming today, and thanks for last night. And got the opportunity to meet your family, and that, that was above and beyond. I really appreciate that. It was a, it was a great event last night. I, I love the way that you're looking for new ways to grow your business and to see how we can promote what is one of the best assets that we have in the county. And you're doing it in a way that supports the community. You know, having the movie night and, and taking on that expense yourself and providing that back to the community, that is greatly appreciated. That's obviously going to hopefully relate to more revenue for the county. And looking at your numbers, even though you had some challenges that were without, you know, they were well beyond your control, I would say, it seems like you're getting on top of it now. I mean, you've had some of the highest revenue. I think seven months last year was the highest revenue months that the peers ever had in each of those months, the highest June ever, the highest July, the highest August. That means that we're bringing in more revenue as a county as you start to execute your plan. And we want to be there to support you in, in whatever way possible. I know I do as your representative down there. Here's all I would ask. Taking all those good things, help me and help this board better tell your message, and let's work on some ways together after this meeting. We can get together and meet and try to improve the communication to where I can come back to the citizens of Santa Rosa County and my fellow board members and let them know about the great things that you're doing. Help us tell that story and get your message out there because you are good community partners. You do live here. Your kids go to school here. You know, you're, you're part of the, the community as well. So want you to be successful and just want to try to increase that communication component.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? On the OMV Park?
Yes, sir.
That's one of those projects that's been in work now for about 10 years, I think.
Yes, sir.
We had to go through a pretty challenging conditional use in order to move that project forward. We assured everyone out there that everyone was going to do the right thing and keep those things mufflered. I think it's great use for the property out there because the property is part of that buffering of the base. It takes public lands and makes it a public use again for those riders. So we just wish you all well on it and make it work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else? All right. We appreciate you being here and appreciate what you all do. All right. That concludes proclamation presentations. At this time, we'll go into Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Litchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend appointment of Larry Strain of United Bank as a private sector representative on the Career Source Escarosa Inc. Board of Directors. I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two, recommend application to the UWF Haas Center for Northwest Florida Assets Valuation and Marketing Support Program partnership in the amount of $11,250 as match for proposed update to the 2003 Military Spouse Technical Skills Inventory. I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three, recommend proposal from UWF Haas Center in the amount of $22,500 for the update to the 2003 Military Spouse Technical Skills Inventory utilizing UWF Northwest Florida Assets Valuation and Marketing Support match of $11,250. I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four, recommend submission of application for the FY 2015-2016 Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant in the amount of $300,000 for continuation of property acquisition proximate to NAS Whiting Field and the outlying fields. I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item five, recommend submission of application for FY 2015-2016 Florida Defense Reinvestment Grant Agreement in the amount of $78,700 for military support services. I think this was listed as $78,000 on Monday's agenda, so this is an up, is a correction. And I make that recommendation without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item six is an update from Commissioner Salter on your trip to Tallahassee.
All righty, thank you.
Please fill us in.
Most of you know that part of our legislative delegation request list was for the state to help fund Phase One infrastructure going into the Whiting Aviation Park. We'd asked them for $4.4 million. Commissioner Williamson, Rob Williamson and I went to Tallahassee yesterday, Tuesday, actually. We had the opportunity to meet with the Senate Economic Development Transportation Committee, which is chaired by Senator Jack LaVa, LaVala. I always mess that up. That's not a Schumacher name, by the way. But anyway, it was very encouraging. I had three minutes to make a two-hour presentation. But it turned out well. We met with the senator and several other representatives after the meeting. We got his best assurance that they were going to do something to help us with the Whiting Aviation Park infrastructure. So we felt good about all the different meetings we had. Also got some very encouraging commitments about beach renourishment down at Navarre. So trip was well worthwhile. Had some great contacts, and just stay tuned. But thank you, Commissioner Litchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that concludes the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go into the Administrative Committee. Number one, recommend acquisition of conservation easement on 3.32 acre partial adjacent to NS Whiting Field owned by Elliot Leonard Pierce and Dunn utilizing Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant DIG and US Navy REPI funding. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number two, recommend acquisition of conservation easement on 3.33 acre partial adjacent to NS Whiting Field owned by Martha Pierce utilizing the Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant DIG and US Navy REPI funding. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number three, recommend agreement with Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services for agriculture best management practices, conservation technician, technician services in Soil Conservation Department. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number four, recommend mediation settlement agreement and general release regarding to Har and Cronly Property Company litigation. We had a lengthy discussion on Monday by the, our county attorney. Are there any other comments at this time? Hearing none, I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number five, recommend settlement agreement for workers' compensation claim in the amount of $105,000 for former employee as recommended by the risk manager. Mr. Walker explained this in detail on Monday. Are there any comments? Hearing none, I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number six, recommend proposal from Playmore Recreation Products and Services in the amount of $173,882 for inclusive playground at Navarre U Sports Complex funded by District Four Recreation Funds based on comparison shopping. On Monday, Commissioner Rob Williamson gave a nice overview of this. Commissioner Williamson, anything else to add at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number seven, recommend letter to Northwest Florida Regional Transportation Planning Organization requesting support for advancing funding for Navarre Community Access Road to align with PD and E for widening of US 98 from Portside Drive to Ocaloosa County Line. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, I would recommend approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number eight, recommend resolution supporting placement of signage recognizing the boundary of Navarre Community. On Monday, we had a couple of citizens to speak. Just make sure we don't get a Holly residence confused with a Navarre residence. At this time, I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number nine, recommend preliminary list of projects for submission of first round of Restore Act funding. We talked about this on Monday. Commissioner Litchard, anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 10, recommend supplemental of 2015-2016 Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, FWC, Artificial Reef Grant for monitoring Navarre Beach reef. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 11, recommend submission of 2015-2016 FWC Florida Boating Improvement Program grant in the amount of $10,000 for reprinting waterproof copies of the Escambia Santa Rosa Boating and Angling Guide. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 12, recommend use of Courthouse lawn noon Thursday, May the 7th, 2015 for annual National Day of Prayer observance to include use of courtroom 300 as rain alternate. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 13, recommend rescheduling Monday, May 25th, 2015 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Tuesday, May 26th, 2015, beginning at 9:00 AM due to Memorial Day observance. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 14 is the list of the meetings for March. That list is available in hard copy and on our web. So I would move approval of those minute, those meetings at this time without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to let the board know that the commission rezoning meeting on March 26th, I'll be in Tallahassee for the Florida Association of Counties Legislative Days for that entire week. So I will not be here. I'll be here for the Monday morning meeting, the commission committee meeting on the 23rd, but I will not, but will be in Tallahassee for the remainder of the week.
Mr. Chairman, ditto.
So Commissioner Litchard, Commissioner Cole, that leaves three of us, so.
Don't do anything crazy while we're gone.
Don't leave town.
I'm sure he'll be reminding me of that often.
I think we're, we're going to be discussing District One and District Four rec funding.
There you go. Sounds like the appropriate, sounds like the appropriate time to me. That new playground equipment's going to look good in Godfrey. All right. That's right. Don't leave town. Number 15 was an add-on by Commissioner Jager Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And back to the last couple of statements. Commissioner Williamson, we're probably going to be on every single committee that you can think of that's vacant right now whenever we get back in town at the end of March. The presidential preference primary, a bill went through the House yesterday that says that that's going to be set for March 15th. We had kind of talked about that. It may be a moving target with Jeb Bush and, and Senator Rubio possibly running for president. The state of Florida and the legislature probably figured we need to move that thing to March 15th where all the delegates were awarded for the winner of that primary. So it looks like it will be March 15th. It should go through the Senate next week. I just wanted to give an update on that because we've looked at the lost referendum as possibly in March. So it's looking like March 15 will, of 2016 will be that date, and we'll have a better idea for sure next week. And then we can start working with Tappy as far as the absolutely drop-dead date for any kind of language if we do decide to do the lost referendum for courthouse in March. So I just want to give a little update on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. And I talked to Mr. Walker the other day and asked him to contact our school superintendent and find out what are their plans on bringing their loss back as well. We don't want to conflict each other at the same time. Be nice. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. That concludes the administrative committee report. We'll move to the engineer's report. Number one, recommend resolution authorizing Florida Department of Transportation locally, local agency program agreement for Tiger Point Boulevard Sidewalk Construction Project. Any comments? I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number two, recommend resolution authorizing Florida Department of Transportation locally funded agreement lump sum for design and construction of westbound right turn lane on US 98 at Janet Street in... of westbound right turn lane on US ninety-eight at Janet Street and authorize execution of relevant, relevant documents. Any comments? Hearing none, I would move approval without objection. It passes. Number three, recommend elimination of requirements for sidewalk segment adjacent to northwest retention pond partial in Avalon Estate subdivision. Does this meet the board's concerns on Monday?
Mr. Chairman, as far as I'm concerned, it does. We discussed a lot about that. We're only gonna remove the sidewalk requirement on the, that north boundary that goes across the holding pond. Everything else, um, in front of the na- any of the lots, as well as that little segment, um, in the south, uh, west corner that was a common area, that the developer would pay for that sidewalk as well. That way, there is a continuous loop, uh, within that neighborhood. It's just that northwest boundary across the pond that would not have sidewalks.
Good. I would move approval without objection. Here and none it passes. Number four, recommend preliminary plat for Stone Chase Phase Two, a one hundred and twenty-seven lot subdivision located in District One. I would move approval without objection. Here and none it passes. Number five, recommend construction plans for Stone Chase Phase Two, a hundred and twenty-seven lot subdivision located in District One. I would move approval without objection. Here and none it passes. That concludes the engineer's report. At this time, we'll go to the Public Services Committee. Commissioner Jager Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four items today for the Public Services Committee. The first is recommend subordination of mortgage for ship first-time homebuyer loan for property located at four eight two zero Hawkins Drive, consistent with board policy. I'd like to move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cole.
If I might. Both these items, there, there's been clarification since Monday, and, and I was concerned Monday didn't voice it, but it basically was the last terms here consistent with board policy. Uh, we didn't have that on there Monday. I'm glad it's on there today because, uh, from past understanding, this, this simply means there can't be any money taking, taken out of this program, uh, by the, uh, by the, uh, subordination of the loan. So, I'm just glad it's in there on both those items. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Do we have any other comments by the board? I'd like to move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number two, recommend subordination of mortgage for ship first-time homebuyer loan for property located at three nine three-three Tuscan Way, consistent with board policy. I'd like to move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number three, recommend transfer title of two enclosed utility trailers for the Emergency Management Department to the Santa Rosa County Health Department. I'd like to move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number four, recommend allowing Cellular South to upgrade equipment on, uh, on South Communications Tower, consistent with the lease provisions and following conditions. Perform required engineering analysis and provide plans and specifications for proposed enhancement. Relocate existing osprey nests, consistent with state and federal requirements, and install deterrent system around the antenna structure. Provide third-party verification that improvements were installed, consistent with the engineered plans and specifications. I'd like to move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the Public Services Committee report for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. We'll move to Public Works Committee. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item number one is recommend proposal from Bell Steel Company in amount of twenty-three thousand eighty-three dollars and six cents for bridge steel material based on comparison shopping. I move that without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item two is recommend resurfacing the following roads in District Three at an estimated cost of two hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That's Antique Lane, Shell Road, Buck Russell Road, Gene Fleming Road, and Wiley Scott Road. I'll move those without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item three is recommend reduction of speed limit to forty-five mile an hour on the remaining fifty-five mile per hour segment of Berry Hill Road. We discussed this at length, uh, on Monday, and today I'd like to move that without objection.
Here and none it passes.
And the final item is recommend proposal from McLean Tennis Incorporated in the amount of ten thousand four hundred dollars for coating and painting tennis courts at Villa Vaneece Park based on comparison shopping with funding from District Five Recreation Funds. I'll move that without objection.
Here and none it passes.
And I'd like to welcome our, uh, new Assistant Director. Uh, we've all had a brief opportunity to meet him, and, uh, we'll be meeting him more as we put Mr. Whitfield out pastor. So, and Mr. Chairman, that concludes this report.
Thank you, and I look forward to, uh, Mr. Whitfield coming back in the future and giving us a presentation on beekeeping. Uh, at this time, we'll move to the Budget and Financial Management Committee, Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seventeen items today, and thank you to staff for removing the six thousand pound gross vehicle weight rating from the description on the first five bid actions. I appreciate that. Item number one, recommend bid in the amount of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars from Hub City Ford for one four-wheel drive crew cab pickup truck for engineering department as the low bidder meeting specifications. I'd move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number two, recommend bid in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars from Hub City Ford Incorporated for one four-wheel drive pickup truck for landfill as the low bidder meeting specifications. I would move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number three, recommend bid in the amount of twenty-four thousand ninety-nine dollars from Hub City Ford Incorporated for one four-wheel drive pickup truck for mosquito control as the low bidder meeting specifications. Move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number four, recommend bid in the amount of twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-one cents from Milton Chevrolet for one pickup truck for mosquito control as the low bidder meeting specifications. I'd move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
And item number five, recommend bid in the amount of thirty thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars from McKenzie Buick GMC for one fifteen-passenger van for co-op extension as the low bidder meeting specifications. Move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
And one, two budget amendments. Mr. Chairman, item number six, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one eleven in the amount of thirty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars transferring funds from the TDC Fund to the Net Service Fund for Visitor Information Center. I move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number seven, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one twelve in the amount of twenty-five thousand for the participation in the Team Florida Partnership Program Commitment Agreement as approved at the February twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen meeting from Electric Franchise Fee Reserves. Move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number eight, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one thirteen in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars recognizing self-insurance settlement revenue and the self-insurance fund and allocate for expenditure. Move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number nine, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one fourteen in the amount of ten thousand dollars carrying forward funds in the fine and forfeiture fund for temporary personal support. Move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number ten, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one fifteen in the amount of five thousand dollars for maintenance of traffic study for proposed replacement of the Pensacola Bay Bridge from General Fund Reserves as approved at February twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen meeting. Move approval without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number eleven, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one sixteen in the amount of two hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars for design services for the Santa Rosa Courthouse in Milton as approved at the February twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen meeting. Move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item number twelve, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one seventeen in the amount of fifteen thousand recognizing Florida Forest Service Volunteer Fire Assistant Grant and allocate for expenditure. Move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item thirteen, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one eighteen in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars recognizing two thousand fifteen EMS grant and authorizes for expenditure. Move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item fourteen, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one nineteen in the amount of fourteen thousand for the coating and painting of the tennis courts at the Villa Vaneece Park and purchase of two basketball posts, backboards, goals, and nets from District Five Recreation Funds. Move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
Item fifteen, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one twenty in the amount of sixty-five thousand for the construction of a westbound right turn lane on US ninety-eight at Janet Street as a FDOT County Incentive Grant Program using Area Three Impact Fee Reserves as local match as approved at the November fourteenth, two thousand thirteen meeting. Move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
And with great joy, item sixteen, recommend budget amendment two thousand fifteen dash one oh-two in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars to purchase playground equipment for the Navarre Sports Complex from Playmore Recreational Products and Services and construct a twelve-by-twenty-four pavilion and two picnic tables from District Four Recreation Funds. Move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, the final, last item on the agenda, item number seventeen, recommend county expenditures check register. I've signed the check register and it's been presented to you for your approval. I move approval of this item without objection.
Here and none it passes.
That concludes the Budget and Financial Management Committee report. Chairman Salter.
Thank you. Uh, County Administrator? County Attorney?
No items.
Mr. Blaylock, Ms. Bell, we will now open it up for the public forum. Anyone from the public wish to address the board? Yes, come forward, please. Name and address, please. After you turn the button on. There you go.
It's on now. Hi, my name's Sharon Phillips, eighty-seven thirteen Highway Ninety in Milton, Florida. How are y'all doing this morning? It's nice to see y'all. I had some comments that I wanted to share with y'all this morning. Um, again, my name is Sharon Phillips, and, um, on the county commissioners meeting that was held on March the ninth of this week, there were some comments, comments made about the development of the truck mud racing track that is going in on Rooster Run off of Jeff H. Road, and me and my husband have that property, and we are, um, creating that development. And, um, first, I want to say that we're very excited about it. We've had very good input, lots of positive comments from the community and from other business associates. David and I own our own business. And after receiving the zoning board and county commissioners' approval, we hired an engineer and began, um, the site plan, uh, development, uh, going over things that was necessary to create that site plan. And we even requested that we have a, um, pre-app meeting, which we did, and, uh, spoke with a number of gentlemen and ladies in that, and everything went good. And the area is a wide-open field. There's no real clearing to be done there, and so we began removing some, uh, dirt from that area, what we thought was getting ready for, um, developing it, to get ready for the layout of the track. Well, um, there was a call made in to Leslie, to the county, about that, and Leslie called to me, and she said, Sharon, you, you can't do anything out there yet. And I said, well, why not? And she gave me some explanation. I said, I really don't understand that, but okay, that's fine. And that was it. There was one phone call, uh, ceased doing whatever we were doing out there, and that was all there was to it. And in the comments that were made here on Monday, it concerned me a little bit because it seemed that, um, in some way, we were trying to be deceptive or something, and that's not the intent at all, you know, and that was my point of coming here this morning, hopefully that you can put a name and a face to me, Sharon Phillips, and my husband, David Phillips, and who we are in the community and what we're doing, and by no means do we mean to undermine anybody or anything. So I felt it sort of necessary to, you know, just come forth and let you know what we were thinking and, and, um, in that, you know, the comment was made about assessing some fines, and I thought, well, you know, now, isn't that a shame that, um, so you would feel like maybe you need to assess more fines or something? Nobody never said anything to be about a fine, and I had not a clue that it was as little as fifty dollars, you know, I mean. So I never went in the door thinking, oh, I can just pay a fine if they don't like what I'm doing or whatever. I always assume the best about people, and I find that it's generally true. And as a business owner, um, you know, I think that we should really be working together and helping each other in these developments. And I think the way Leslie handled it is probably the norm to make a phone call and just say, hey, you know, this is not allowed yet, or something like that. So, you know, I would say to you, Mr. Williamson, I know that you're on that committee, that I don't know that assessing a bigger fine on anybody, somebody that's wanting to, um, shirk the system, money's probably no object, object anyway. And I just think it's better to just talk to people and just say, and I'm, I'm wondering if that's even a problem in this county anyway, or are we having lots of people that just totally do not respect the development order process or whatever. And by the time they're into the development order process, they've got a lot of approval, approval prior to that. So, I don't know. I don't like the negativity that, that come with that. And, uh, the point was brought up that, well, maybe you should assess a fine and, um, you know, s- let it be given to the schools for the better, that the good of the schools. And I thought that, you know, certainly, uh, giving back to your community as a blessed business owner is an excellent idea, but one that we've already participated in, in many ways, and I wanted to share that with y'all, just, um, to know that David was born and raised here. I was born in Pensacola and I was raised here. East Milton is our home, our community. My mother lives off of Shangri-La West. His dad lived up across from Bitcoz for all those years. I live on eighty-seven thirteen Highway Ninety. That is our home. It's our community. Uh, we all, me and David and my son, all went to East Milton Elementary, King Middle, and graduated from Milton High School. My granddaughters have been through East Milton. I still got one in East Milton, and now I've got a granddaughter that's in high, uh, Milton High School. So we take great pride in our little community. We think it's an awesome place to live, a beautiful place to live, and do business, and worship, and make friends, and, and that's, that's what we've done. I think, um, that, you know, you would be hard-pressed to find anybody that didn't, um, like the way we conducted our business or our personal lives, for that matter. Um, David, himself, has served on the East Milton Water Board for ten years, and of those ten years, David has been, um, pre- uh, president of that board for six years. And then, uh, he is currently vice president. And so any of you that's ever done any volunteer work, you know what that involves. You know, that, that is of your personal time. That is something you've got to have a heart to do and really care about doing, much less to do it for ten years. And, um, you know, the wellhead, waterhead, wellhead water protection area act stuff, all that stuff that come up, I know it was something that, that could not really be supported through the East Milton Water Board because of such a broad spectrum of things. And I'm seeing now that the community was not as informed about all these drastic changes that was coming up. You know, protecting our water source is a very important thing, no doubt, but to, um, try to limit businesses with no real studies behind that as to what, how that would impact the water well system is just blows my mind, which, that's another argument for another day, but I had to say, you know, just common sense has not prevailed in that at all. David also serves on the advisory board at the United Bank, and together, we have supported many programs. One at East Milton Elementary that we do is, uh, books for second graders, and we've been doing that for four years, and actually expanded it the last time they come around. I think I picked up Bag- Baghdad Elementary, or might have been, um, the other little elementary school there in Baghdad, but I, I'm not sure. And, um, then any fundraiser that comes along, we're all the time giving to that. So, you know, some of the point of, of telling you what we do do for our community is to just let you know that we're very blessed in our businesses, and we believe in giving back to our community, um, that has served us so well, too. We've always been involved at the East Milton We've always been involved at the East Milton Youth Sports Complex. I say always, you know, when our kids were of age and our granddaughters were out there. We've donated material, you know, clay there, and we've sponsored so many teams over Santa Rosa County in the sports field. It's a joke around the office because it gets to be that time, and it's like, you know, you can spend $1,000 quick helping one of your employees' kids and one of the boys that you hunt with's kids, and it adds up, but you know, you give back because that's the right thing to do. And also, one of the more recent things that we've done was the Santa Rosa County Fair had to relocate, and I'm sure y'all are aware of that. Well, we done the land clearing there and hauled off that material for free of charge, and we love that little fair. We're glad it's out there, too. Also, you know, we get into paying quite a bit of money for doing business in Santa Rosa County. I'm not sure where all the money goes, but I can just give you a little bit of figures on what we've paid in property taxes for Three Trade Consultants, and Three Trade Consultants' name. We've paid over $15,000 in property taxes since 1998, and we've paid over $8,900 in property taxes on our property in Navarre that's a business property, over $12,475 on a piece of commercial real estate that we own in the city of Milton, and I paid over $110,000 in tangible personal property tax. So we, you know, again, we generate money and we spend money in our community, and when we get ready to grow our business, come up with a new idea of a business, then, you know, that's when we want our county representatives to know who we are and that this is just not a one-sided type thing. In our 20 years of being in business as Three Trade Consultants, I've employed as many as 30 people at one time. The average is about 20. Every one of those gentlemen and two ladies live in Santa Rosa County and draw a paycheck from us, and that's not counting me, my husband, and my son. And so, you know, again, the money is being poured back into my own community. So I look forward to growing my business and developing this mud race facility, and y'all are all invited to come spectate. I think you'll find that you like it, and I appreciate your time this morning.
Hang on a minute, Sharon. Any comments by the board, Commissioner J.R. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Phillips, thank you for the in-depth overview of everything you have going on, and my main concern was work started before it was supposed to, which there was a stop-work order, which sounds all rough, but that was a simple phone call to ask you to stop work, which you complied to. And I think that the development order is finally through. So now you can start backward. So, protocol worked. But what this does, it brought to our attention that there may be, and Commissioner, the other Commissioner Williamson stated, how some people could roll the prices of these small fines, not necessarily the first one, but the second, third, fourth, into just part of the project. So I would like to still see, as a county and as my committee, us look at that, where we have some type system in place where we have a little more teeth. Now, I'm not saying the first, you know, the first fine, or maybe even the second, but down the road, when you get people who are continuously violating the rules of the county, we need to have some teeth where we can stop that. It worked in this case. It was a simple phone call. You stopped the work, and that may not have happened if it would have been somebody else. And we open ourselves down the future, somebody maybe coming out of town who doesn't care about the community like you do, where they're just going to roll those fines into the cost of doing business and just carry on as they wish, but if we have some teeth, we can stop that. So we'll discuss it as a board. It'll take three votes to change it, and we'll have that discussion hopefully next month sometime, as I get with Mr. Gomillion and the rest of the staff. I had a lengthy discussion with Mr. Phillips yesterday and told me all about what you're doing out there, and it sounds like y'all are excited about it, and it's going to bring some people to the community that maybe not, you know, that wouldn't be coming to Santa Rosa County if it wasn't for this track, which means they're going to be either staying in hotels or RV parks or wherever, and they're going to be spending money in the community, so that's good. And also, you forgot to add to your list of things you've done in the community. You donated the lights to your lighting rigs for the flicks on the field for our parking because it was very...
That's just something real recent.
So that's just something real recent that you have done. So we appreciate what you're doing, but my main concern was work started before it was supposed to. It took a phone call. You stopped work, but I do think we still need to look at that process down the road for people who might continuously violate and not do the proper thing like you did.
Yeah. Like I said, it made me wonder, as a citizen, was that a real problem? Is that a real problem? Do y'all come against that a lot, where people are doing things or, you know?
Mr. Gomillion, you could probably speak to that a little more. I mean, it does happen. It may not be something that's as common as not, but I think that as we grow and we continue to grow, which, you know, the economy's picking up and things are growing, there's conditional uses, there's different things happening within the Public Works Department that it could, if we have a plan where there's a little bit of a loophole in a sense, we need to be looking at it now instead of worrying about fighting it when it comes to us. We need to look ahead and kind of make sure that we stop it now before it starts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. I mean, we do have cases where our work starts before the development order. As far as the numbers that, I don't know how to quantify that other than say, you know, some cases are pretty flagrant, if you will, more so than what you described.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's some of that type activity that happens.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, you know, it's that old saying, one bad apple ruins the whole bunch, but then, you know, I still think it's so much better to take the approach where you're working with people, communicating with people, talking to people, you know, and not be so quick to put something in writing that makes it, you know, such a harsh fine right to the beginning, because then you've got, there's an intent there, you know? And I know in my heart of hearts, what I was doing was not hurting anything or anybody, but that it, the way it was interpreted, you know, caused me to appear to be something that it just was not, you know? So it is. I know it's a challenge for y'all to weigh all this out, get the wording just right. I just think it's better to err to being a little more lenient, a little more considerate of property owners, what they've invested in the property that they purchased, what they're trying to achieve, that every situation's different and that it just cannot be black and white. So much in life is not black and white. But again, like I say, I know is, then you're on that other side of the table where you're at, and you're trying to set some rules and regulations, but...
Sharon, we appreciate you being here. There's always two sides to every story, and I'm glad you came today to tell yours.
Yes, sir.
And keep in mind, if everybody would always do the right thing, we wouldn't need any rules at all.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman.
In the perfect world.
Commissioner Cole, hang on a minute, Sharon.
Thank you. Sharon, I appreciate you all coming down today. I mean, we're all Santa Rosa County proud, but, you know, with you and David, East Milton School, the Piggly Wiggly, makes me very proud to represent East Milton and having raised my children and family there. And, you know, we can always say, we've got the, you know, the other communities have Publix and Winn-Dixie, but we've got the only Piggly Wiggly in Santa Rosa County.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You forgot your Dollar General store. All right. Anybody else? Public forum is closed, and we are adjourned. Thank you.